To the flag, we are the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, officially caller meeting to order and start with a roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Anita Lowery.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throggord.
Here.
John Collins. Kira Hungate.
Here.
Don Rollins.
There.
Joe Toward.
Here.
City Attorney is here, Mayor's here, Amanda Silliam Burke-Clarkson. So first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agendas if available.
I'll make that one. A second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Who's back there?
Jane.
Jane. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from the July 11th meeting.
I just seen one little time.
Okay.
On the present, I don't know, we didn't have Jan this week.
Jan, were you here last week?
I was. Last week and last month too.
Last month too. Are there any other changes to last month's meeting minutes?
I'll write the truth.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve the last month's meeting minutes?
I will.
Has changed. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion every...
Second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is our public forum, in which we'll allow two minutes per speaker to address the council, mayor. We might ask questions or comment on the topics, but we won't take any official action tonight. Would anyone like to address the council? Yes ma'am.
Say your name.
Jennifer Sims, from the Economic Development and Beautification Committee. And I decided to come tonight and give you an update on what the committee has been doing. So the memorial project, the planning is underway, and we've got some fundraising that we're investigating in the design, and the police chief and fire chief are helping with that, and so that project's finally getting underway. The "Welcome to West Fork" sign, they'll go west at the Harps and on this side of 49. Chad submitted a proposal to the Highway Department, and so hopefully we'll get approval for that and can install that before the end of the year, because the money for that is in our budget. We are planning to do another tree shrub giveaway in the fall for a part of the Tree City designation that we have, and we're working on a strategy for web presence.
Any questions for Jennifer?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the council? No? All right, so we'll close the public forum and move straight into our business reports. Planning Commission Chairman Scott Oliver is not here to give us an update. Scott is serving as the Chairman of the Planning Commission by default. Our Planning Commission, several people left the Planning Commission. Scott was one of the few that was left on it, and by default was elected Chairman temporarily. So we still have one empty spot on the Planning Commission, and he is wanting to wait until the commission fills up before they hold an election for offices on that. So we're still experiencing a little bit of technical difficulties in our Planning Commission. But if anyone knows of anyone that would like to serve on that, they can get an application from Amanda.
So we decided couldn't point them out, Duane. Since he's already serving on the water.
So we would need to adjust our ordinances in order to allow that.
Okay.
Okay. After thinking about it some, I think Duane would have been an excellent candidate for that. However, I also see the reason for that ordinance, you know, to keep a mayor from appointing the same person to all the councils, so I can understand that. All right, so next, our library report. John Riley.
Just a couple of things to update you on. First is that last week, or last month, I reported that our children's librarian is retiring, and that's still the case, but she's actually deferred to retirement till through the fall, which is good news for us, so otherwise we'd be scrambling to figure out how we're going to replace Storytime, which is, you know, a long-standing tradition, our pre-K Storytime at the library, so... But the County Library Board is going to meet us later this week and decide what to do with that position, so we'll just await their decision. And our director has asked us to sort of think about, you know, what we see as the needs for children's programming at the library, and so she's seeking feedback on, you know, what we think, you know, if we're replacing that position, what would be the best way forward, if we're not replacing it, that is, I guess. So anyway, we're, you know, we've also been asked not to speculate on what, you know, what the board will decide, so we're not going to do that, but anyway, we'll need to make some decisions about children's program. Currently, you know, Sherry Rogers, she dropped, we share her with four or five of the liberal libraries, or small libraries in the system, so, and she comes, say, she does two sort of programs, you know, ongoing through the fall and spring. That is the pre-K Storytime, and also she does a teen book club, or pre-teen book club, so, you know, and she's got like real continuity in that position with her. She's teaching like kids and grandkids of some of her original audiences, so it's, you know, she's going to be very hard to replace, but we're, anyway, we're kind of at a crossroads. It can be, you know, it can be a good thing, you know, we're starting to think what we really think is the future of children's programming with libraries, so any feedback that you all want to give me, I'd be happy to pass on to my director, so, to the county. The other thing is we're, we haven't opened, we've got a resignation on our West Fork Library Board, and we also sort of have an ongoing situation with a current board member who is not within the city limits. Her residence is not within the city limits, which we found out afterwards, after she'd been serving for a while, that that was actually a state law. And so we're trying to get some sort of decision on, you know, if there's a way forward. I would personally love to keep this one person who's been on the board for a year, who's been doing a great job, I think, and has been very effective, but, you know, the fact that she does live outside of West Fork city limits, so we're trying to find out what our options are there. You know, talked to our director, I've also put her in email to Ruth Hyatt, the State Development, the Director of Library Development for the state, and hopefully I'll get an idea at least of what our options are, if we have options. Because every time an open position comes up, we, you know, there's people that come to mind that think would be very good, and like right now, we have an open position, and one of the people that I have in mind that I think would be very good is lives outside the city, so sometimes these laws don't make a lot of sense for, you know, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense for our library to not to be limited to, you know, people within the city limits, but, you know, I guess it's my opinion. So I guess I'll update you. I need to get your name or two soon. We don't want to do that position right now, we only have four people on the board, which is not, you know, the minimum required. And again, it could be down to three if... So we were, we want to move on as quickly as possible, so I'll be able to update you, I'm sure, next month on that.
Okay.
I wanted to give a copy of the library laws to, I've got the... Highlighted, anyway, that's for you, we've got an extra copy, so either Attorney keep that, or Mayor, if you want to keep a copy there.
Okay. Any questions for John?
I said I was going to be briefed, didn't I? I don't know if that's a briefing.
You're still there. All right. You're picking up for Keith Watch where he left off.
Right, right. Go through the room.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, next, Paula, or I'm sorry, Vicki, I just wrote his name, so I wouldn't take all of it. Vicki, would you give us?
Dylan. Hi guys. Well, I don't really have a lot to record, I'll be much more brief than John was even. We actually had a pretty slow court as far as that goes for July, just because the mayor, I mean, excuse me, the judge usually takes his vacation in July, so we had two weeks that we didn't even have court, so, and now Paula is enjoying her vacation, so I'm just trying to keep from messing too much up for her to have to fix when she gets back. If you all have any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Probably our busiest month as far as calls and everything else.
No doubt.
We had 438 service calls, 38 reports taken, 226 citations, 22 warrants, and 73 ordinance violations, 19 misdemeanor arrests and one felony, four property complaints. I'd say a lot of parking tickets. It has calmed down though, it's drying up, so that's a good thing. As far as our city ordinance violations collection has become a problem over here.
Oh, yes. I'll be better, thank you.
The one house, we have sent them certified email, uh, email, through the mail, we've sent them a certified citation, which they returned and wouldn't open. We've been to their house twice, they're just kind of refusing us. I guess our next step would be to get the attorney and see what we can do. Let's see what else we have. As far as classes, I want to brag a little bit on Officer Langston, he took the A-Ride class. I think there was about 30 people in that class, 14 of those people failed the class. He graduated with 94 percent. So that's a good thing. We've got some classes. We completed our Texas certification class. Let's see what else. We've got, in paragold, if we can find the manpower, we've got a community policing class with a guy that was over the community policing in Dallas, did that for 35 years, retired to the Capitol. Very, very good speaker, he's also been a professor. If we can find the manpower, I want to get somebody down that class, I want to see what he's doing. We did hire Officer Lunsford from the county. He would have been our first bilingual officer. Good officer, came well recommended. He got a job in Multikraft, because I said, "So you want to be an electrician civil policeman?" And I gave him a hard time, he said, "No, not really." His brother-in-law is one of the owners of the company, and has promised him a position in investigations on the international level, so he's looking at 80,000 versus 32, can't blame the guy. But we're back on the trail, we've got several that we're looking at, and we'll just keep on plugging and finding somebody that wants to be here. We also have a class coming up the 24th with an attorney that used to be at Washington County, at the, what are you going to call that, District Attorney's Office, I guess, for Washington County. He is now with Norwood in Norwood, he's going to teach a criminal class to us, and if you guys know anything, right, Norwood's kind of the polar opposite of the county, they're the ones that come after, they're more the defense attorneys, so it's going to be an interesting class, and we're going to open that up to other departments and see where to deal with that. Hopefully, I think we've got some good things planned, I think we're going right along, school's about to start. The, I had talked before about going 50/50 with the contract for the School Resource Officer. Collins talked to the school board, they're 100% for that. He wants me, I would bring this to you tonight, but before I do, he wants me to go ahead and take it to him, so he can take it back to their board one more time, and have them look over it, and make sure there's no changes or anything like that they want to do. They seem to be excited about the school year, and we're excited too. Now the NAR can. Will that be now, will that be later?
Um, we'll talk about it later.
Later?
Yeah. That's a rush to...
About all I've got, I think.
I'm really encouraged by the amount of training you guys are doing, John. I like to see it, month over month, you come in here and somebody else that's training in some way or another.
We'll keep plugging at it. Like I said, we just need to have manpower and we can get these guys good training.
I don't know if everyone, there was some Facebook posts earlier in the month, of course, I don't reply to those, and I encourage the city not to reply to stinks that get stirred up on Facebook, or whatever, whatever other social media there is. But, so, another town published their handling of their local swimming hole, and there's some folks in West Fork that said, "You know, that's how we should do it as well." What they didn't know was that's exactly what West Fork did, we just didn't post it on Facebook. But if you look at John's call log, last month, we had 289 service calls. He's at 438 this month. I have it on pretty good authority that the city of Farmington, which has population of 7,000 to 10,000, with, what, 10, 12 officers?
Yes.
They had 456 service calls in the month of July. So John and his boys were busy.
We were working hard.
I just wanted...
They're calling in your bag.
Anyway, just wanted to point that out, that, like I said, Farmington barely had more service calls than we did for the month of July, and they have over twice as many officers, so...
Because we had all the people over here at the river.
Good point, it's true.
Good job.
Anyway, thank you, John. That's a lot of calls.
It is.
All right, Isaac?
I don't have a whole lot. I did drive through West Fork papers on my way over here, they are done asphalt, so it looks pretty good. Other than just a little topsoil and some cleanup in yards, they should be done with that project. And as quick as they get done with cleaning up our mess, the actual rehab part of the surf project will be done, and then we'll start the post-rehab monitoring to see if we, see how much of our inflow we capture. And Nick, Nick already sent me some stuff on that. RJN wants to do that over a three-month deal at about $12,000 a month, but they're hoping if they start in September, they can get done in September. They feel like if they get two or three decent rains, they can collect the data that they need, so, that's worst-case scenario, is the three-month thing. Sure y'all seen the sidewalk? What they've got done looks pretty good. We were able to add on about 150 feet coming north with the rest of that grant money, so it'll come past, just past the Neal's place, and then tie back in right there. We had like $36,000 left in the grant, and we're able to add on some more sidewalk there. It'll tie in Anne Street with a crosswalk with strapping and stuff like that. I did talk to the county today about Die Creek Bridge. They don't know. The federal government's got it held up, FEMA's got it held up with some paperwork, and that was the answer they gave me. They could start tomorrow, could start next year. They just didn't know. Soon as they got the word, they mobilized the contractor back down here.
That's what it is.
So that's still in limbo. I did, I did some, the tank inspections, we're trying to get some stuff together on tank inspections, and a plan of action had turned into the Health Department. I let McQuellin look at that as well, I got the same people that inspected the tanks did the budget estimates for repairing the tanks. I let Nick and some of his guys at McQuellin look over that, and they were pretty good. Nick wanted to, Nick changed one thing, thought that we should go ahead and do an interior re-coat of the Kelly Street tank, because it's in pretty bad shape, or the other group wanted to just patch it. So, and we'll talk about that at our next committee meeting about, that's something we're going to have to start trying to budget in, year after year, I don't think we can just jump in and do all of them, but we would like to try to do Tower Street next year, try to budget it in and get it rehabbed, and then maybe Kelly Street the following year. And then the big tank on Dogwood, well, it passed, because it's fairly new, but we're working on trying to get the little tank up there decommissioned and just take it come out, because we don't, we don't really need it. We have sufficient enough storage. Our daily gallons of water's like 120,000, and we have 400,000 there at Dogwood, plus another 150 over here, so, and all that we're requiring is to have a 24-hour storage.
But it's in really bad shape.
It is in really bad shape, but the rehab estimate that the tank spec gave me was like 75,000, Nick thought it would be closer to 120, to rehab what's there, and that was totally redone, and possibly cutting some metal out of it, because it's rusted really through when it's parted to. So I think the best, best plan of action for us is trying to decommission it and just take it offline. And I talked to the guy at the Health Department, he was, he was okay with that. We just have to get an engineer to submit that to the Health Department. Everything that goes through the Health Department has to be through an engineer, so, and Nick will be here as well to talk about that, so... Other than that, I don't have, Mr. Great, no, but y'all have some questions.
So a couple of things that the council needs to be aware of. Isaac and the Water Service Commission have talked about these issues more in depth, but we are facing a challenge of water supply on this side of the bridge.
Yes.
So we have, currently we have 500,000 gallons of water on the other side. We're talking about decommissioning one of those tanks, but only 150,000 on this side. Another issue we're having is, what's the, is it Greystone?
Cedar Springs.
Well, but Greystone is...
Greystone has a couple of pressure issues on the top side of it.
So what we're looking at is our tank up here, it's an older tank, it's a smaller tank, and the reason those tanks are on the hill is because the water runs out of the tank to the houses, and that's where the pressure is. There's no pumps to pump that water. As the city has expanded, our capacity, our storage capacity and our pressure on this side of the, on this side of town have diminished. And so a very real situation we're looking at is, in the near future, we're going to need to look at replacing those tanks.
As Nick and I kind of talked through that, our need for a tank is probably still on the east side of town, due to the fact that the pumps at the pump station run about 17 hours a day, and we have sufficient storage. It's just, we have to keep the tanks so topped off for the people at the top of Dogwood to have any kind of pressure, they have to continually run. They never get to shut off until like 2:00 in the morning, probably, you know, 2:00 to 7:00 is when they get to take a break. We need a tank higher on this side.
On this side?
Yeah, so that we can shut, you know, the pumps can shut off, because they run around the clock. We run, the pumps run 17 hours a day, the altitude valve here at the river runs four. So four hours a day it fills the tanks, and that's it, but the pumps run 17.
To keep that one full.
Yeah, to keep that one full, so Dogwood has pressure.
And so what they...
And that stuff, I mean, we can talk about that as a committee and hammer that out, but...
What I just wanted to express to the council was, we have some issues that we're going to have to address, maybe not in the next year or next two years, but within the next five to 10, there's a lot of money that's going to need to be paid out for infrastructure. We're currently dealing with the sewer issue, we're getting that infrastructure, but this water is going to be, and there's some other things tied to that as well.
Well, I mean, people, I think those people at Dogwood's got plenty of water, but when you're level with the bottom of the tank, those people have 20 pounds of pressure, whereas somebody at the bottom has 100 pounds of pressure, so, and we have pressure problems on McKean and Mineral Springs, some of Mineral Springs, and even up Falcons, back in there, we have a little pressure problems. And that's in our, in our growth, I think.
And those problems aren't, you know, they're not just contained to West Fork. West Fork isn't a family city with pressure problems, but just want you to know, as we move forward, it's definitely something to think about. We, something else I want you to keep in mind is, so we currently have a 2,000 gallon minimum charge on our water bill. Of that 2,000 gallons, that minimum... West Fork, West Fork isn't a family city with pressure problems, but just want you to know, as we move forward, it's definitely something to think about. We, and something else I want you to keep in mind is, so we currently have a 2,000 gallon minimum charge on our water bill. Of that 2,000 gallons, of that minimum, there's about 60-something percent of our water bills fall within that minimum usage. So we have a lot of people paying the minimum. Of those people paying the minimum, very few of them are using 2,000 gallons. So what I'm saying is, we're hitting our seniors as it is extremely hard with the water bills. They're paying for our water, any upgrades that we're making right now. And so as we look to make changes, something that I just want you to bear in mind, that it's those on the fixed income that are really bearing the burden there. So as opposed to raising water rates, I'd like to see us look at also changing the structure up a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's some ways, and Joe probably knows, he's built in Fayetteville, they charge impact fees for anything over 3/4 inch meter. One inch, two inch meters, they pay impact fees, so, and I think Duane Lloyd even talked about, they have a impact charge that they charge for every tap that they make, because it depletes their, their infrastructure. Every time they punch a hole and pop it, it depletes their infrastructure, so...
And we just, in the past, we just haven't planned for that, you know, I mean, we had a system that carried us a long ways, but in the near future, we're going to have to make some changes. Also, I wanted to note in Isaac's report, that we got the McQuellin engineers in their improvement project update, status update, with, and Isaac mentioned that they're going to start doing the testing. With that will come, we'll finally get some data on how much that line to Fayetteville is going to cost. And so the state is going to mandate, we've met with the state, they're basically going to mandate that we increase the sewer rates. With that, they're going to forgive some of that bond. We don't know how much, they wouldn't necessarily say they were going to, but they will forgive some of it. But that will come within the next year. We'll see sewer rates begin to rise, and so everyone just needs to be aware of that. That's something in the very near future.
And with the rehab monitoring, we will, we will know how much we've captured and how much we still need to look for, and the next step for us is to go, we'll start going door to door and checking, cleaning out caps, and one of people's backyards, and making sure their cleanout caps are on, and they're not draining their swimming pool in their cleanout cap, or, you know, we've already found one at Easy Mart where there's a cap broke off in the parking lot, and it's got water running in it, so, so it's just going to be, it's going to be a grueling process, but...
But we'll finally get to know what that project, that's the...
What we've, if we've made any progress, which we have, I mean, we see it at the sewer plant with... plant. We, we get an inch and a half rain and it, it kind of floods our sewer plant and, and goes into the pond. And where it was going into the pond for a week, now it goes in there for 12 hours and then we start taking it back out of the pond. So, so we've made a den in it. And, and they just capped the last old line off today at our vest. They filled that line and ploated. So, now we're completely, the rehab part is completely done and we're completely on the new part. So, so we'll know more about it, especially if we get rain this weekend.
Any other questions?
I have one question. Back to the towers, if you decommission one, understand that we have plenty of storage for, you know, drinking water or what have you. But does that give you any concern at the fire department if we decommission? And is it a concern? I guess is what I'm asking. Do we have plenty of water for emergencies and that type of stuff?
I mean, we're, we're working at 550-something thousand gallons of, of storage right now.
So we're-
Where we're using 120 daily.
Right.
So we have-
And you'd never use 500 gallons on fires?
Yeah. The main thing, and when we, when it first came up, we were, we were concerned about storage over here on this side. But I, I think it's more important that maybe we go higher up on this side and get, because that, that is where our growth area is, is back Mineral Springs and now, now Hollow. If we can provide more pressure to that side, it, it would help pressure problems that we already have over there. This over here, we could, we can almost cap these tanks and make them pressure tanks and turn the altitude valve up and, and turn more pressure up over here and, and push it up a little bit higher. So, it's just a little-
For a little bit, then until you start getting-
Yeah, until it looks like a sprinkler system. So-
Well, and, you know, this is pretty old.
Yeah.
Always a balance in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would-
But the, we, we got the guy taken care of at Cedar Springs. He is, we're able to provide him about 30 pounds of pressure and he's gonna pump on it to his houses. And he's actually poured two footers.
That raises a question. He's gonna use small economical pumps for each house, right?
Mm-hmm.
For what, $200, $250?
Yeah.
Is thinking about the tank, would that be an option? If we needed to forestall financing another tank as the small economical pump to the houses that have low pressure over here to, if we need to, to buy us some time to finance it?
Well, and, and I've had a couple of people, there's some property up at the end of McKean that's for sale. And, and I've told them, I said, we can get, we, we can't get any more water up there without you having to pump it up there because they're on past the last houses and it goes on up. But like Russell Ogle, I mean, if the tank drops any, he calls because he sees it first.
So there's an option, that's being done behind Harps, is a $200, $250 pump. It's gonna augment the pressure to these houses and take it from 20 or 30, whatever you're gonna give him, up to where it's usable in the housing impaired. And it's, I was amazed that they were that inexpensive and an option.
Yeah, they've come a long ways.
And I don't think that's something we need to get in the, the pump business, but it might, you know, it takes a pretty big purchase.
Yeah.
A grant might be an advantage. And I did have one other question. I notice we're back up to 28%. Was that a single source incident?
We had two leaks. And, and Davis used some water in acres on the street over there.
Okay. So we ran it behind them, maybe?
Well, they filled their tank and wrote the gallons down. And it either got turned in or didn't get turned in. We're not just 100% sure of that.
Well, my last question is, about another couple of weeks ago, Cruz are gonna be back on Woolley Bridge? Maybe?
Maybe. I hadn't talked to him.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
Anybody else for Isaac? He came up here with a short report.
No, my, my legs are tired.
Isaac's got a lot of stuff going on right now. A lot of stuff that's really dealing with the future of West Fork. Chad?
Just to touch on what Jennifer said, the, the request proposal that I sent in to the highway traffic department was for the welcome sign to be placed on the right way up there. I've been dealing with Jimmy Vought at, at the State Highway Department. And in the conversations we've had, I think it's kind of a formality. I don't think there'll be any issues. I've, I've given him everything that he's, that he requested. And so, hopefully with her something on that soon can get moving on that project. And then also touching on the, on Riverside Park, I've said before, but the police department's presence down there did make a difference this year. Yes, I'm sure. And everybody else. We still have problems. We still have a lot of problems, but, but they are fewer and they're less severe than they have been in the past. So they have done, it could have been the new signs I put up too, but it was probably the police department. They, no, I, they've done a good job about being down there and writing tickets and being seen, and it has helped. Still problems, but less. And then as far as a, a couple of things to point out, I, my, my only employee did leave. He, he took a job with the City of Fayetteville. He felt it was a better opportunity for him and, and it could have been. So I did, chose to advertise on our, just on our Facebook page at this point and to see what's out there. For one, to, to save the cost of, of the way we've done in the past. Advertising through the paper and stuff can get expensive. So, and also not to have to weed through quite as many employees, or applicants. And, and so far, it looks promising. So, I've, I've, I've got some, some good quality applicants interested in, that have applied. So I'm hoping to make a decision on, on that pretty soon and get me some help back in here. And then also, I'm, I have a committee member, a parks committee member that has resigned also, William Mason, who was put in, put on the committee, I think back in November, has resigned. His job has just not let him be the biggest part of the committee as he's wanted to be and attend as many meetings as, as he's wanted to. So he has stepped out, stepped down. So, that happened after my parks committee meeting. I haven't informed them, but we have a meeting next week and, and we'll address that and see about getting someone else on there. William was outside the city limits. I'm allowed to outside the city limits, the way our ordinance is written, although we have a current member that is in the process of moving outside the city limits. So he, he will take that spot. So our next member will need to be inside the city. Like I said, my, my committee kind of picks our own members, so they could decide differently, but that's, that's the way I see it working out on that. So, and then, other than that, just, we've got Pee-wee football and cheerleading flag getting geared up. We've already started practices on all that. That's what Angelo is here doing, getting some information for cheerleading and, and then just trying to keep the parks mowed up, cleaned up, and, and working on some other projects to prepare for offseason work, as far as the baseball and softball. And that's about it. So, if you've got any questions, any-
Questions, Chad? My guys would feel better if we grilled them a little bit.
All right.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you all.
Chief?
Y'all better settle back. I've got about an hour.
Can I ask you a question first?
Yes, sir.
How's Travis?
Well, that's why I was gonna basically give you guys an update. Some may know, some may not. He was on a call, trying to help a guy that was lost, wrecked his motorcycle, pick it up, torn a tendon loose in his left arm. So he's had to have that reattached, which he did that last Thursday. Follow-up supposed to be sometime this week, supposed to be seven days, seven to 10 days after. We'll know then how it comes out. Don't know. Hope he comes back 100%. On those kind of deals, you never know. So, maybe my, my part-time guy is busy trying to sell his house and move. So, been a one-man show now for about three weeks. So, we'll see how, see what we hear from the doctor and we'll find out if he's able to come back or not. They gave him two options, either take an early retirement or fix it. So naturally, he wanted to try to fix it. But that's really all I got for you guys. If you have any questions.
So, I was gonna point out that your calls were up about double this month as well.
You know, you, like I said last month, I think typically June and July are our slowest two months of the year. We were probably busier last month than we are any other month so far. So I don't know what, what's going on. Must be a lot of fooling around. I don't know.
Clear face.
Yeah. All right.
Any questions for the chief?
Let Travis know what we're thinking of.
I will. I sure will.
All right. The next section of our business reports is finance director report. If you have anything for us to mention.
We might have some questions.
So, um-
Pull some line on him.
Yeah. Um, I'm sure everyone looked at their statements of, from the varying departments and funds. All the, all the departments were positive on income this month or past month. So, we can dig into them deeper if you guys would like, but-
That makes sense.
Yeah, there was nothing crazy. Like I said, everyone was in positive territory this, this past month. So, all right. So let's move into our new business. John, you wanna just go ahead and get us into this? I discussed this with a radio reporter the other day.
Did you?
And he kind of beat me up over it, I felt like.
Over the Narcan?
Yeah, well, I didn't know enough about it to really, you know, I knew enough to be dangerous. And he started asking a question. Well, it's kind of loaded.
It is loaded right now, and a lot of departments are jumping on it, a lot around here are not. In our policy, pages 126 to 31, we talk about narcotic overdose. Of course, we all know opioids are some of the biggest problems we have right now with the overdose. We have not seen that in West Fork as far as heroin or any type of prescription drugs. We have seen it one time, which was heroin with fentanyl. Narcan is a drug that some of the departments are carrying. It's loaded in a syringe. You have to have training for it. And it's supposed to reverse the effects of the, of the, the drug. I've kind of done my research. Washington County's not gonna go through it yet. They have, like pharmacies love to do, they've upped it by about 500% the cost because they're gonna get it from the big departments. My request right now, I'm not anti-narcan. I just don't feel like it needs to be mandated for the police, for every police officer to carry Narcan. It would cost us about $2,000 a year. I'm not sure exactly what the shelf life is.
About a year.
Do you know? About a year. So we'd have to replace it every year. That puts us in a liability as of, of course, we're gonna use it on officers, but if it's a, a person on the street, we also have to use it on them. From what I've researched, when you use the Narcan on them, they can become very violent. We got a guy at 3:00 in the morning that we give Narcan to. Last thing I want him to do is attack one of our officers. My biggest argument to it is, we have an emergency service right here. They're usually within three to nine minutes away. They carry Narcan. They even administrate it, administrate it. They administer it differently than we do.
You answered my question.
That's all right.
This was first put in there because it was a deal of, well, it might save the officer's life. Most of our officers work on it. That's just a, a fact. I can get on this radio and ask for help faster than I can give myself a shot. By the time they get there, they have a better chance of saving my life than I do. I think more, in essence, it's more, for us, it's more of officer safety. If you're gonna search a car, wear your gloves. If you're gonna deal with somebody that's on this stuff, wear your gloves. Help the ambulance out. Let's get it taken care of. If it, in the future, becomes a huge problem, like it is in Chicago or something like that, and we need to go to it, then we do. But I think for the time being, we don't need to take on that financial responsibility.
Been one case of epidermal contact with an officer on a, a year?
In a year, right.
And that is nationwide?
Right.
So, obviously, it would save someone's life, and I'd have more sympathy for an older person than maybe got confused on medication. It would be an asset. But if it's right there, probably a very wise recommendation.
That's what I would recommend.
And so, just in case someone's unfamiliar with it, what we're talking about is, these are a drug, a drug that can be absorbed through your skin, right? If the officer was, was searching a vehicle or searching somebody-
Yeah.
Came in contact with it, the, the drug can be absorbed through your skin and you can get the, the high or the reaction, whatever it is.
Right.
And so this is a, like an EpiPen, is my, the way I've kind of envisioned it in my head.
Somewhat, somewhat, yeah.
You give yourself a shot, and it's supposed to fix that. However, in the middle of fixing it, it can throw you into a rage.
Oh, absolutely.
So, John's not, you know, he's, he's not trying to, to get away from Narcan. He's just basically saying, let's change the policy to where it's not a requirement that, that they all carry it. They have it on the ambulance here in town. So-
I think it's a deal where, just for now, let's watch it. Let's see and see where they go with it. And just, if it becomes a need here, then it does. But for now, I don't think it is.
I make a motion that we authorize them not to have Narcan.
Like I said, changing the policy.
Yeah, change their policy so they cannot have to carry it.
I'll say it.
Sure. Do we have a motion and second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Thanks, John.
Our next item of new business is the authori- authorization to go over, over budget on our property insurance line item in multiple departments. I don't know if we told everyone. Kristy's on vacation. She went to see her in Tennessee. So she's gone. That's, I'm going without Kristy. But what this is, it has been discovered that the city is severely lacking in its insurance policies. On this building, for instance, we have a policy for $250,000. So, if the tornado came down the river tonight, what would it cost to rebuild it, Joe?
I looked at a building in Tulsa yesterday, the tornado hit. And it's a lot more in accordance.
So, what, what this is, Kristy will at the end of the year make the adjustments to the budget and to balance the books. What she's wanting, basically what she likes to do for, for the auditor and for her, just for clarity and transparency, is to bring this before the council, get the council to, to approve it, get the council to know that, hey, we're gonna have some line items that are in the negative. Okay, they're gonna look bad until the end of the year. And we'll close the books. We'll make the adjustment. But what we're doing is buying some new insurance policies that better reflect our, our property values. That's essentially what-
In line with the valuation structure.
Yes, yes. Any questions on that?
I guess my only question would be, why haven't the insurance companies wanted to do that already?
That is a good question. I'm not saying that they haven't. I, I don't know the history there. I know that we have a history with the same company for quite some time, but we've been very happy with because our rates have been extremely low. And, yeah, I don't know why the insurance companies have been doing, and maybe they have. Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Where's the money gonna come from if they do a year to five? I mean, if it's gonna go over to every department?
So, it's gonna be a line item that goes over. Yeah, it's, the, the entire departmental budget won't go over.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah. So we'll just be balancing that line item.
Okay, got it. Sorry. That's understood.
That's all right. Any other questions? This is what we need to scrutinize. This is what, this is what we're here for. All right. I've entertained a motion to move forward with this one way or the other.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. We move forward and do what we need to do to get our city protected.
Okay. Authorization to go over budget on these line items. So we have a second, don't we? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. All right, guys. That's the end of our new business. I don't really have any comments tonight. The department has pretty well covered everything that's going on in town for the past month.
Mayor, I, I think I, it says department had me, but I forgot-
I think I asked this park department head meeting, but I forgot. Is your planning commission member need to be inside the city limits since that was brought up with the library board?
Yes, we have, we have the same requirements to can be outside in those positions, or if you, just when I'm out recruiting. Yeah, thank you for that.
Put it on the marquee, I'm trying.
Yes, I'm recruiting new neighbors out my way. Next city council election, my, my, this is definitely...
Heard that before.
She's sitting there every year.
They're a lot younger than me and they're...
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.